A call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, March 17th, 2025 at 5:42 PM at the city council chambers. At this time, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions and out of respect for those who are speaking. Moving on to the agenda, item one, roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Sam Esson.
Here.
Item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Joining us tonight to lead us in the pledge, we have Girl Scouts from Troop 10, 216 and 10, 259 to step forward to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies, and good luck. Moving on to item three, the mayor's report, just a few, a few meetings and events that I attended since our last meeting. We had our first couple neighborhood listening sessions. I was able to make one of those. We had Military Affairs Commission to discuss construction on Monette Air Force Base, pending construction on Monette Air Force Base, couple of legislative meetings. We also took part in the Police Officer of the Year Awards, along with the Police Civilian Employee of the Year Awards, Task Force 21, a Workforce Development Council meeting in Bismarck, and was down there a couple of times these last couple of weeks to testify on the flood protection bill, and then our Hub City Funding Extension Bill was down there this morning. Had a dinner meeting with the Commander of the 20th Air Force Chamber Board Meeting, dropped the puck at the Minotaros, and took part in a pie-in-the-face fundraiser for Monette Youth Football. So, are there any discussions? Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to item four, 4.1, the city manager's report. Harold.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as always, there's a memo from my office and department heads in the, in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
Are there any questions at the city manager?
If none, we do have a brief presentation by our finance director this evening.
All right, looks like the technology's going to work to some extent. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is just a quick update on some things for fiscal year, 24-year end, where we're at, going over some of the numbers on the revenue picture side of things. I'm also going to have a couple of slides dealing with potential impacts of some of the property tax measure bills that are out there that, and how they will impact the 26 budget, just so we can start thinking about that. And then this morning, we had a lengthy meeting discussing our capital improvement plan in-house, so we'll just talk briefly about that and start the discussions around the budget. All right, there we go. Sales tax collection, so this is just going back to 2016 total for the year, and then the small graph on the bottom is year-to-date, so you can kind of get a little bit of a sense with the sales tax numbers, where they're at. 2024 was a pretty good year, and then right away in the first month in 2025, we had a good start, and we'll see if that continues through the rest of the year. This is that graph again with all kinds of colors and crazy lines, but this just shows again the volatility, the sales tax collections throughout the year. It's hard to really come up with any real consensus to draw, you know, some type of projection out of those numbers. Of city revenue, this is going back to 2016 as well. Now, I'll point out that I believe it was in the 2021, the formula changed, so that increase in 2021 was because the change happened mid-year, and then it's been somewhat consistent with the price of oil. In Bismarck last week, they told us that the state's projection for the price of crude coming up in the next biennium is a significant decline in price, and it, a little bit of a decline in production as well. So we'll see how that unfolds a little bit as we get closer to budget season, and how we think that'll impact us with the, how this flows through to the Hub City formula. So just some highlights here, going back the last few years, and the percentage of our budget that's funded by property tax, and I think the takeaway here is the decline in the percentage of the budget. So the last few years, the budget has increased typically year-over-year, but the amount of property taxes declined, so that the amount of our budget that is funded by property tax continues to get smaller and smaller. And when we look at the public safety function, and that's police, fire, dispatch, I think that was it, and the task force, I believe it was, so essentially, the funding in the general fund for those departments essentially uses up all of what we levy for property tax, if you look at it that way. And then of the amount that goes to public safety, about 91% of those budgets are people. This is some historical data, again, going back to mill levies and the dollar amount of property taxes, and this is just thrown out here for, you know, to go back, if we go back to, I think the first year is like 2006 on there, where our mill rate was at the time. The mill rate was somewhat steady, a little bit declining, and then it took a precipitous decline, and that was kind of at the beginning of the oil impacts that we saw. We had some surge funding, we had a significant increase in sales tax collections, those types of things. So the mill levy declined because we had these other revenue sources there that was pre-flood, so we had all the sales tax that was coming in. And then in 2011, of course, the flood happens, that we're already into that budget year, and then there was the decision that was made to keep that mill levy artificially low, I think was the term, because of the impacts of the flood. We didn't want to raise property taxes and have that stacked on top. In 2016, we saw a significant decrease in the amount of sales tax money compared to what they were anticipating being collected that year, so it was a shortfall, and they had to cancel some of those projects in mid-year. That was followed by significant, significant increase in the mill rate, and now we've seen that level off and then declined last year, and that's primarily due to the use of reserves. So the mill rate, looking at the last few years, 2019 to 2025, in those seven years, the increase in dollars is about 8.2%. During those same, that same timeframe, the mill rate has decreased about 7.8%, and then that equates to an annual increase of less than 1.4%. This is just a quick CPI calculator for our region, so it wouldn't allow me to put in anything over $10 million, so put in $100, and $100 in 2018 was worth $128.73 in 2025 numbers, so about 28%, almost 29% increase in that same timeframe. So the impact of levy caps, and I want to have this conversation a little bit, and I'm showing you a graph with the teeter-totter slide, if you remember that, on how mill levies and the budget works. So we just want to go through some of this a little bit, and what the impact of, of the levy caps might be. So, one of the bills proposes a 3% in dollars over the 2025 budget, so 3% of last year's mills or property tax that we levied would be an increase of $722,041. It also, one of the prominent bills allows for a 3% increase over the highest base year in the last three years, which for us would have been 2024, so 3% increase on the $2024 would be an increase of 5.3 million and change from where we're at with the 2025 budget. The prominent bill also allows for new growth to recu, or realize that new growth, so using last year's mill rate or the 2025 mill rate on the new growth for the upcoming year would equate to about $227,000 and change. So given this range with what we would potentially look at, if those bills flow all the way through and get signed by the governor in the current state, we're, we'd be looking at a potential cap to increase the property tax somewhere between $949,000 and change to about $5.5 million. So that's kind of the range of possibility that we would have for the 2026 budget. So the total valuation increase was about 3.3% year-over-year, and then the valuation increase due to new growth is 0.95%. So now we're going to go back and just do this exercise again, looking at 2025, we levied $24,68,032, and we do the math with the taxable valuation that we had of just over $247 million, it calculated out to 97.11 mills. So looking at 2026, this is the what-if scenario, if we use that exact same dollar amount that we levied last year, we applied against the anticipated valuation that we're going to have for the 2026 budget season, what the mill rate would look at. So the taxable valuation right now is estimated at about $256 million, so we do that math with the same levy amount as last year, we had anticipated about 94 mills would be our rate. So, and again, the importance of the mill rate is, we take that rate, and now we have an individual piece of property, we can go back through the math of what that property is assessed at, do the calculation, apply the mill rate to it, and that gives us what the city tax bill would be for that individual property. So, looking at the impacts of a potential cap on property taxes, if we look at the 3% increase of just the levy dollars, that would get us up to $24,790,000 and change, adding into the new growth, puts us just over $25 million, and when you do the math on that number with the anticipated valuation, we come up with a rate of about 97.7 mills. So it'd be just a slight increase, I think about 0.6 mills. So now going back to the calculation per $100,000 of value, so the 2025 mill rate per $100,000 of value would get you a city tax bill of $873.99. If we took the scenario of a flat dollar amount, meaning 2025 amount that was levied, applied over the new valuation with a slight decrease in mills, we'd come up with a bill of $846, and if we took the 3% cap plus the new growth, would realize a gain of just a few mills, and it'd be about $879.30 for, per $100,000 of value. All right, again, I alluded to the meeting we had this morning, so the unconstrained, I guess I'll use the word, what has been submitted for potential projects in the next five years for capital improvement projects, and this is everything from flood control projects to building improvements, or new buildings, or infrastructure like water lines or streets. So the unconstrained CIP was a little over $940 million, and with that, a local share of just under $300 million. So again, a bulk of that is flood, flood protection takes up a lot of that. So I do caveat on the bottom that obviously this is the unconstrained, it's kind of the ask, so we'll need to constrain that based on some type of evaluation criteria, and that's where we're hoping for some input from you folks. So this is an example, and I gave you a printout of this because it's a little bit hard when I pasted this in here as a picture. I went to a training session in December, put on by GFOA, and one of the exercises that we went through was an evaluation of capital permit projects, and there was two different approaches to the evaluation. So we sent this around a little bit, and Lance made some modifications, kind of tailor it to what we thought would be important here in the city of Minot, and looking at some different criteria, and this is kind of the approach that we are proposing or would like to, to take on, is that we run these projects through some type of evaluation criteria such as this. It doesn't have to be this exact criteria, but we would score them citywide based on this, and then we would be able to look at what funding is available for each type of project, for flood control, for example. You can't use that funding for any other type of project, so it essentially has its own revenue stream, but we would apply these projects, and we'd be able to rank projects across the entire city in order of magnitude of importance, or how critical that they are. And I'll end this on a high note here, we got word here in the last week or so that the city of Minot has once again been awarded the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the 45th consecutive year that we've received this award, so, you know, it's one of those things, went back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back, I don't know how many times, but it is still very important to us because there's a lot of work that puts into that, and I think the significance in this is that we can say that there's confidence in what we put out in an annual report, and, you know, it's not, this next slide shows, whoops, the criteria that they go through, and they do caveat in here, it doesn't, this award doesn't mean that the, the report is correct, it just means it's in the correct format, it's transparent, it has all the things it needs to have, but when you combine that with our audit report that we get and those types of things, I think the citizens of Minot can have some confidence that what we're putting out there is transparent and true and correct, and they can have confidence in that information. So, again, the 45th consecutive year, lots of kudos to Jenna and Melody and their teams. I mean, we've gone through updates to our software program, so we have a financial analyst, Kristin, that's a big part of this as well, doing reports and IT staff, so a lot of folks doing the heavy lifting for this, and I just want to give them a little bit of a shout-out too. And that's all I have, so any questions?
Congratulations, Dave, from you and your team for 45 years, back-to-back-to-back-to-back. Any questions for, for Dave? Mike?
Oops, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dave, I'd have about 15 on each slide, but we'll get some of those later. The, the one thing I just wanted to focus on a little bit, just to make sure that it's clear for me and hopefully for the public as well, with what's going on in the legislature, and you might want to go back to a slide, I just, I think it's important to understand the constraint that will be there, right? Because we already know what that is, you know, assuming that it goes through the way it is, and they'll tweak some from here, but I just, I wanted to make sure, so I want to make sure I have this right, and yeah, this is, this is kind of what I was looking at, so the total increase that we're going to have available to us, if we had that need, if we really thought that we really needed to do something, is going to be somewhere, I don't know how to, how to even get this across, you're saying somewhere between 950 and 5.5, and the reason the 5.5 is there because there is a bill that includes the base year as the, a base year concept rather than the prior year, right? Now, 1176, the, the governor's bill, I don't think has that. I think that's the one that doesn't have that. Am I correct, or do I have that wrong?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Blessam, I believe that is the bill that does.
That is the one that has, okay, that's good, because that'll give us, I think, the most flexibility. So then what it would do is it's using the, a base year, is that just a startup mechanism? Or is it, or is it always a base year of the last five or whatever it is?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Blessam, and again, just my interpretation of the legislation is that you can always go back three years and use any of those years as the base year, so that's where it's going to become a real critical for us, is trying to plan out longer term, because we have a window that we can utilize that 2024 year as the base year, and at some point that will expire and we can't go back. But that's also some of the questions that we have in the unknowns is, there's the language, if you don't use that ability, you can carry some of that forward to future years, and we don't know exactly how that mechanism will be applied with the base year too. So there's, there's a lot of unknowns, and that's one thing I want to point out here, this isn't carved in stone by any means, this is meant more as a food for thought, that we know that there's going to be some constraints, what it can look like, we think is going to be somewhere in these parameters right now in, in today's world. So that can change before the session goes, or is completed. I know there's been discussion about using an index like CPI plus a percentage, so this could change a lot. The bottom line is, I think it's, the, the confidence is there that there will be some type of constraint, and we won't have the unlimited ability to, to increase that.
If I can continue, and, and so, you know, watching the, there was testimony in the Senate this morning on 1176, and I only got through about half of it because it's long, but that, and I think, I think you're absolutely right, I think there is, that is their primary intent, is that they're, you know, they, they feel that it need, that needs to happen here. One, one other facet to this whole thing, as we went through the progression you laid out, and it was, it was very good, I liked thinking of it that way, we saw what the concept that we all have of the, of sort of the tax base rising is happening, right? It's there, and I think one of the things that we all kind of got to grapple with a little bit here is, at what point does the public actually see the benefit of that? Because that's not what's happened so far. That tax base is rising, I mean, that's what we're seeing coming through the numbers, and we're seeing the mill rate, you know, theoretically, if you're spending the same amount, mill rate should be dropping, right? I mean, that's the, that's the idea, that's how that should work, so simply holding them steady means an increase in spending, and so that's why we, you know, we got to kind of keep that in mind, the, the process that we all think of with, with the base rising is occurring, and we should be seeing some benefit to that. Now, the problem we've got is that we've got infrastructure projects coming out our ears, and that's what the rest of your presentation kind of gets to. And so just, just one last thing then, so the, I think the grid is great, how do you, how do you envision us working with you and Lance and the rest of the team to actually go through and do this? Will this be a, a retreat thing that we do, say July-ish, or what's your thought on how we go about that process?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I don't want to steal Harold's thunder because I keep reminding him that it's his budget that gets presented, but yeah, I think that was some of our conversation, that we have to get some guidance and maybe a special council meeting to have focused discussion surrounding how we approach this. You know, I think the concern is with some of the things we have going on, I have some folks that are going to be out on maternity leave this summer, so we're not going to have multiple iterations or the ability to go through this three or four or five times, I think we need to kind of get the guidance and have some, some direction upfront, so we can get a little closer to the mark the first time through on this, and I know there's always going to be things that are going to come in, but if we can agree or get the consensus of the council on the direction, you know, then we can work as staff to build the budget that we think is in compliance with that direction and bring it to you folks, and then hopefully that the bulk of that heavy lifting is done when it's put on your desk, and then it's just a matter of refining what is there, and, you know, things change as the year goes on too, so it's, it's not carved in stone at that point, but I think the upfront direction is going to be crucial.
And just, just one last follow-up, so, and, and maybe a little bit for Harold as well, but so I guess in my mind, the SIP plan we have right now, right, we know what's already on the project list, we could, we could take those steps soon if we chose to, right? We could go through and do a, and do a scoring exercise, and I see Lance coming up if he wants to maybe mention something too, because I, I just do feel like if you're going to have constraints in the summer, I, maybe that, maybe now is the right time to focus in that area, because we've got all the operational things that we can do later.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Blessam, and the, the challenge becomes is the funding sources associated with these projects. So I'll use flood control as an example, right now, we have some momentum in the legislature for some accelerated funding to get that project completed. So if we pump the brakes on that now, we can potentially lose that momentum there as well, and the funding, there's no guarantee that we'd ever get that back in future bienniums either. So that's one of the challenges. Now, the plus side of that is, we have sales tax that is dedicated towards flood control. We can't use that for anything else, so even if we scrapped all of those projects, that money is going to sit there, it's not going to be able to be used for anything else. So it's a bit of an exercise where we have to evaluate these projects against each other, but also the funding sources that are available to fund those projects. So the example I will give is if we have two competing projects, they're both funded by tax levy, and let's say one's a $1 million project and one's a $2 million project, and we only have $1 million to spend, well, does that mean that the $1 million project automatically goes and the $2 million doesn't? What if the priority of the $2 million project is a lot higher? We will never get that project done if we keep spending $1 million on lower competing projects. So that's where we have to evaluate this, and the, the long-term outlook is going to be critical when we look at constraint on, on the property tax side, and potentially other revenue as well. There was all, other bills proposed that were going to cap sales tax and other potential revenue sources too, so longer-term planning is going to be critical for us, and we need to be somewhat objective in these, otherwise it ends up being somebody picking winners and losers based on how this project is presented to us, and that, that isn't always the, the best way to approach that.
Any other questions?
Did Lance had something?
Oh, Lance, did you have anything to add? Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mayor and council members, just to talk schedules, so this, this matrix that we put in front of you tonight, our department heads will be taking the 26 and 27-year projects and ranking those internally in the next couple of weeks, and then we're going to use that information, and then the entire draft CIP will be built the week of March 31st. That'll be completed and then sent out to you, so you have a couple of weeks to review that information, because it's, it's quite a lot. And then probably sometime in about mid-April, maybe around that 17th or so, we'd have a workshop where we would sit down with you, and then me and the other department heads that put projects together would walk you through what those projects are, probably more focused on 26 and 27 projects, because those are the, the ones that are, are near to be funded in the CIP, but then we'd also walk you through what we have thoughts on for the next five years. And then we'd have a discussion on, on what those projects are, whether you feel they're important to be funded, what some of our constraints are, where those funding sources are potentially coming from, and then we take your direction and then put that towards a final capital improvement plan, and then present that to the public likely at a meeting in May.
Okay. Any further questions? Any questions of Lance? Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor, any other questions before I retreat?
Seeing none, Dave, you are excused. Stay in the chamber for a while, though. Okay, moving on to item five on the agenda, that is the Planning Commission 5.1, consider the report to the Planning Commission. Public hearing, moving on to 5.2, public hearing case 2025-03, St. Croix addition zoning map amendment. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak in favor of or against the zoning map amendment. Second call for those who wish to speak in favor of or against item 5.2. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please record your vote.
Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.3, Public Hearing Case 2025-05, Don de Dusk addition, Lot 2 zoning map amendment. Now is the time, now is a public hearing, now is the time for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the Don de Dusk zoning map amendment. Please step forward. Second call for those who wish to speak in favor of or against item 5.3. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission as presented.
We have a motion and a second by Paul, is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 5.4 on the agenda, Public Hearing Case 2025-06, Lot B of OTLT 23 South 32-155-82, zoning map amendment. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak in favor of or against the zoning map amendment. Second call for those who wish to speak against item, either speak against or for item 5.4. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from the Planning Commission.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, is there a discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to action, item six on the agenda is public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. Public Hearing 6.1, Final Approval of Renaissance Zone Case M-71 by James Ryan for a five-year property tax benefit for the rehabilitation of commercial residential rental property located at 8 Fourth Street Northeast. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak in favor of or against the final approval. Second call for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the final approval on item 6.1. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Scott.
And maybe Brian, you can answer a couple of questions for me. On the Renaissance Zone, is there a timeframe on when those projects have to be completed?
Yes, Mayor Ross and Alderman Samuelson, in 2021, we updated our Renaissance Zone Development Plan, and at that time, we instituted a three-year deadline to complete these projects with the possibility to receive a two-year extension granted by the Renaissance Zone Board and City Council. However, this project was approved before that was enacted, so any projects that were approved before that change was made or technically grandfathered in. So a, any projects approved after 2021 have three years to complete their product, their work.
Continue.
So then from the completion of the project, in order to turn in the receipts or whatever you need to do to be eligible for it, is there a time limit there? In other words, I, I looked at, there's a letter in here from our former city planner that showed the completion date as May 9th of 2013.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Samuelson, the applicant, the applicant had applied for approval on 20, in 2013, they'd received conditional approval at that time, meaning that they could begin their work. They didn't wrap up their work until last year, they re-roofed the home, and, and, and after that was done, the city assessed or conducted an inspection and found that they had completed all the, the work that they had promised in their original application from 2013. So again, the Renaissance Zone process is a two-step process where there's a conditional approval and a final approval. Tonight, this is for final approval. The, the approval that was granted in 2013 was a conditional approval. It's right in, in the background, the very first sentence that they had received conditional approval in 2013.
Okay, just so that I don't misinterpret this, there's a letter from Donna Byer, our city planner, and in there, on the first paragraph, the lax sentence, it says, "The project is complete as of May 9th, 2013, to begin the income tax exemption."
And yes, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Samuelson, my understanding was when the app, when that letter was sent down to the state of North Dakota for final approval, something happened at that point, and the state of North Dakota did not approve the, the, the final approval of that application at that time. And Mr. Ryan had to go back and do more work. And Mr. Ryan is here, he's in the audience, so if he has, if he'd like to address this, he can as well. I was not here at that time, but we have inspected all the improvements, and he has met, he's, he's completed all those improvements and is eligible to receive the, the final approval at this time.
Any other questions? Mike?
Um, Brian, I guess the, the question that I have is, from looking at the map, I think as it's published today, this block is still in our Renaissance Zone program? Is that correct?
Um, Mayor Ross, Mayor Bless, or excuse, Alderman Blessam, I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look at them, I don't have the map in front of me right now, but I presume that it still is. I know, I know some of the blocks along the river were taken out in 2019. I'm not sure if the, if the block for this one was taken out at that time.
If I can continue, um, I, I guess that's, it's, I have a hard time with these, you know, there's a whole process that was set up that gets them going, and people made decisions based on the current program. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't ever feel good about even contemplating voting no when we're at this point in the process. But I will say, I think we are off on this program. When you look at that block, we've got, it's, there's one commercial building and three houses on it. Why it's still included in the program is beyond me, and it highlights again why this program doesn't do what it's supposed to be doing. You know, in the discussion this morning on, on House Bill 1176, when they're talking about property tax, they reference these types of programs as ways that cities and municipalities and counties and everybody continue to shoot themselves in the foot over property tax because we give up the money that we're entitled to in the first place. And, you know, Brian, you've been heavily involved in our economic development, and I appreciate your time there, but these are the discussions to me that are important. It's, it's not whether we vote yes on this one. I think that ship has sailed, they've met their requirements. As strange as this one is, just over the number of years, I guess they met each step when it was required. I am a little, I guess, reluctant now because I didn't realize that it was actually a failing once it got to the state. I guess if I missed something in the, in the information, I apologize for that, but that, that, I guess you have concern that that part of it's been rectified, because I know that there was a whole new project, right? We got a new roof, I guess, in the last couple of years, is that the idea?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct, yeah. Alderman Blessam, correct.
So I, I guess just to continue again, I, I don't know, this one, this one doesn't feel great to me. I, I'm, as I said, I'm reluctant to vote no on these because people act in good faith, and they, and they do things based on the programs as written, but to me, this case highlights a lot of problems with this, with this overall program.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, I, I understand the situation here, and I want to let the council know, there's, there's about seven or eight more cases like this one that are out there that were done after the flood. They were approved around 2011 to 2015 that have not been completed. Since I've been here, all the cases that have gone forward have, have been completed properly and in time, but there are still a handful of older cases that are still out there. I'm not sure if the applicant is even working on their projects yet alone, or if they're even alive. So it's, uh, it is a situation that I just want to make the council aware of, there, you may see more of these in the future, and if you'd like to give some direction to me tonight and how we should handle those in the future, I can, I can take that back and talk to the officials of the state of North Dakota and find out if, if we can just close out these old cases and just do away with them altogether.
Mr. Mayor?
Rob?
Thank you. Brian, I guess just two things, like, one of them is trying to wrap my head around this that it's been going on for 12 years, and there's no way, shape, or form that we can say, hey, we were good after 10 years and you didn't have it the way you needed, because I mean, in reading this, it looks like Mr. Ryan didn't have all the receipts and the necessary work done back in the timeframe, so we just gave him into perpetuity to go ahead and, and make up receipts or to do a roofing project and?
Yeah, Mayor Ross and Alderman Fuller, there were no receipts from the 2013 to 2015 timeframe in the file. We cannot find them.
So, okay, so he had receipts, we didn't, we didn't have them, I mean, which is a necessity to us giving him the abatement, is that correct?
Absolutely, Mayor Ross and Alderman Fuller, yeah, we, we require the applicant to submit the receipts to us to make sure that the work had been done.
But nowhere, I mean, prior to 2020, nowhere in our stuff did we have a cutoff that said, hey, if you don't get us the receipts by this date, we're, we're out. Mayor Ross and Alderman Fuller, no, we didn't, before 2021, we did not have a deadline for these projects to be completed by.
And Brian, this might be for you or, or maybe for Ryan if he's got the info, what, what's this worth? It's a five-year, it's a five-year reduction in the full and true value, so what are, what kind of numbers are we talking about?
I think I'll let Ryan take that one since it's an assessment question.
Perfect.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, in my memo, completion memo presented to the Renaissance Board and to this committee, my recommendation is only to grant the $80,000 reduction that would have been in place in 2014. Our assessment notes and information going back to the post-flood review of the property back in 2013, which would have been for 2014, show that there was substantial improvement in completion of the property at the time. The valuation that would have been attributed at the time was $80,000. If we were to apply the full exemption that we would be eligible for if the project was happening today, you'd be looking at about $184,000 reduction, not, instead of an $80,000 reduction for the property.
If I can continue, Mr. Mayor, so just back to the envelope, what, what, how much property tax are we giving up over the next five years?
It's about $13,000 when I calculated it out.
It'd be on an $80,000 valuation.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this would be for Brian. Pardon me, I've got a frog in my throat this evening, but I would certainly like to offer some kind of advice or some guidance on, on establishing a deadline for the other issues that we have out there, the other parties that have had some sort of approval in the past, looking at, I'd, I'd like to say the end of 2025, I think I could be gracious enough to say to the end of 2026, which would give them one more building season, you know, to, to be planning for, but if we can somehow get approval or authority to do that, I think that that would be giving them a lot of time, but it also helps us in some of the budgeting.
Okay. Is there any state regulation that we're tied to with, I mean, does the state have a deadline on these?
Mayor Ross, I would believe the state had a regulation, it would have been in our development plan to begin with.
Okay. Any other questions of Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Scott?
I'd just like to make a comment, and my, my, my vote here does not represent the property or the, the owner of this property. I just, I, the Renaissance Zone, I just do not believe should be something that we use for economic development, giving away property tax and make someone else, make the rest of us make up for it, so I, I'll, I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, seeing no further discussion, please record
Motion passed five to two with dissent from Fuller and Samuelson.
Moving on to item 6.2, Public Hearing Final Approval Renaissance Zone Case M100 by Michael and Rachel Cyan Spectrum Fitness for a five-year property tax benefit for the rehabilitation of a commercial property located at 1915 North Broadway. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the approval of the Renaissance Zone case.
Good evening, Kyler Column, 1325 27th Street Southeast here in town. Full disclosure, I am a employee of Spectrum Fitness here in town. While the merits of the Renaissance Zone program should be debated going forward, I just want to state some of the personal impact I've seen from this. I attended Spectrum School of Massage, which is the addition that they added on into the back of the building, which they applied for the Renaissance Zone case for. They've done a fantastic job, they've revitalized the building front to back. It is a phenomenal facility that now it does not just provide facilities for Minot to, and house new students, it also does for locations in Bismarck and hopefully Grand Forks and Dickinson as well. So this has allowed for what was a gym and a massage therapy center to now flourish into a school and prosper across the state. So I am strongly encouraging your all approval of this vote, thank you all.
Continuing on with the public hearing, now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the Renaissance Zone approval. Final call. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Rob, second by Paul, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
Moving on to item seven on the agenda, our consent agenda, we have 23 items on our consent agenda this evening. We have been asked to pull item 7.2-2, 7.6, and 7.7. Are there any others that need to be pulled? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the council?
I'd move the remaining items.
Second. Motion by Mike, second by Paul, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to the first item that was pulled from our consent agenda, ordinances 7.2-2, ordinance number 6066, 2025 Transit Mobility Manager. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Scott, you were the one that asked to have this, do you want to take the floor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be consistent, I did not vote in favor of this the first time it came up. We're, we're going through a process with federal dollars and accepting federal dollars, and I think as Alderman Blessam has said a few times, there's always a hook, and the hook keeps coming. And this, this is a position that is required for our transit system, for a transit mobility manager. And the way it's stated in the, in the stuff from the last meeting is, it's a full-time position. And yet from the memo, the city has added additional tasks for that manager because evidently it's not a full-time position for us, but yet that's what we're asked to do. And I just think big brother forcing us to do things is not the way to go, and I think that we're going to have a little bit of pushback as we do this transmit, transit mobility of people having to be surveyed and certified whether they are able to use this new system or not, so just my opinion.
Continuing on, Mike?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo kind of the same thing, I, you know, I don't, I don't see this as the right spot to, to, to stop, try to stop something, but man, are we headed down a bad path here. This, this, our transit program is not sustainable the way that it's laid out right now, and all that I'm hoping for is that we do the work that, that the staff have, have said that they're going to do with, with studying the data and taking a look at how we can do things different, but boy, it feels to me like it's got to be really different for this to make sense. And, and, and to Alderman Samuelson's point, the other thing that I'm seeing comments online already about is that- the other thing that I'm seeing comments online already about is that people, it's not working for them. So even though we're going to jump through every federal hoop and we're going to do everything that we possibly can, it's not going to work for the very people that need it most. And that to me is not acceptable. That's the worst of all worlds. Because we're going to be spending even more for service that's not working for the people. And that, that shouldn't be acceptable to any of us.
Continuing on. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
Moving on to the next item that was asked to be pulled, item 7.6, Public Safety Analyst Job Position. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Discussion, Mike, you're the one that asked to have this pulled.
Yeah, so, um, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, whether for Harold or Chief Kelly or, you know, however you guys want to answer. Um, the, the main question that I had was, I, I think in general terms, it seems to make sense. One of the things that I'm not quite getting is why wouldn't we have these types of analyst functions more centralized, whether it's finance, something like that, um, where they're looking more broadly across the city? And it may be that there are, um, you know, there are things that are coming out of the work that you all are doing on, you know, with the train the trainer kind of idea that we had and, and the ways that we're looking at and bringing efficiencies that we're going to need very soon with the budget pressures we're going to have, um, to do that. And this, this just seemed to be an obvious spot to me where maybe it made more sense in a central function. So thought I would ask that question for you guys.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, we talked about that. Um, we had actually met many times, um, with finance and we talked about having it within finance. But this is actually going to be broader, um, having it embedded within public safety with police and fire. They're going to be a liaison to the contracts, um, with the attorney's office, the new contract position. They're going to be a liaison to finance and working through all those things as well as HR. So this is really a broader, um, scope for this position than just finance. So if that makes sense.
Okay, so I, I guess what you just said makes me think even more strongly that I've got it right. Because that, if that is the case, then it's, I'm not saying it's a finance resource because the finance department needs it. I'm saying where's the right central place to have this type of thinking going on within the city? Because what I get worried about is silos going up within the departments and great work going on in police and fire, which I'm sure we would do with this, not getting used in other places where it could. And so, you know, to me, as I look at this just from the outside world, private business, that's how this is handled. It's handled in, yeah, at, at, when I was at Delta, I ran a department called Optimize, or, um, uh, Operations Development. And so that department was that. I was the manager of it. I had analysts that worked for me and we did analysis work across the entire organization. Same thing when I was at 3M. I started a group called Optimized Operations, Central Group, that was focused on doing this across the entire organization. And so the way that you just described that actually makes me feeling more strongly that it ought to be in a centralized group. Um, whether it's run by finance, it could be run out of the city manager's office. It, it doesn't make too much difference to me where it's set up. But it does make me think that we run the risk of having this get even more siloed than we would intend for it to.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, if I'm understanding your question is you're talking about a set of dedicated staff that are looking for these efficiencies? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, yeah, if we have, if we have this, if we have this need within police and fire, which is where this is starting out, I believe we have it everywhere. And so I guess one approach would be to say each department should have a staff member, another FTE, whatever that is. And they have some kind of working group that works across the departments. But man, when we're finding, like, as an example, if you find something that's, like, in, in the, whether it's procurement processes or credit card handling, we've talked about before, whatever those types of things may be, those immediately, I would hope would get rolled to other departments if there's things that are found that are working great. And I think we're going to hinder that quite a bit by having this siloed into just a couple of departments.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just kind of speaking, so this is a position that became, that is likely going to become vacant here in the near future due to a retirement. So Chief Kelly and her staff began the process of assessing, does that position need to be replaced as it's currently at? And the answer to that was no. There's been some changes in dynamics and those kinds of things that, um, maybe the job duties that that position had been doing was no longer required to be as efficient or effective going forward. And so we looked for other alternatives on how that position could be more effective, not just for the fire department, but, um, for multiple departments going forward. So in essence, what we're trying to do is we're trying to do what you're saying, but, uh, I don't think staff is comfortable asking for dedicated positions to help do this. What we're trying to do is as these positions open up, we're trying to transition to that. Basically through attrition is what we're trying to do, through retirements or leaving and those kinds of things. And then we run it through this process improvement assessment to determine, does that position still have merit? Does it need to be replaced back at the same uh, job responsibilities that it's currently having? And this is an example where staff said, no, we can do better here. We can get better use out of this resource. We can share this position. So it's not just dedicated to the fire department anymore. This position can be used to benefit both police and fire, uh, going forward. And we're trying to do that with the same resources that the council has already dedicated to us. So I think in essence, what we're trying to do is we are trying to do what you're talking about. Uh, in addition to not just coming and asking for additional positions to create, to find efficiencies, because I think as Alderman Fuller stated, when we talked about the process improvement before, it doesn't make much sense to spend money and create positions to go find ways to save money. Uh, in essence, what we did is we identified rising staff with potential across the organization, trained them in these process improvements, processes, and they're doing that on top of their day-to-day responsibilities. So we're using our current staff to find those efficiencies on top of their day-to-day responsibilities. And this is one example of, of how we're doing that. And we'll, we're continuing to work on implementation of that process. We're still early in the process. I've given all department heads a challenge to come up with two or three uh, process improvement, things to take through before the budget process so that we as staff can outline those processes and the results of those processes to the council. So you can have some confidence that, one, the investment in the process improvement program training was worth it and that we're actually effectively using that and how we're using it. But in essence, I think staff has heard the message that we just can't come and ask for positions every time we think we need one. We just had a pretty lengthy conversation about that on the transportation side. So here we're taking, when those positions become open and vacant, and vacant, we assess those deeply, and then we bring it back as a recommendation. And sometimes it may just be that the position's not needed. You know, I've heard examples from some department heads where they're, they're starting that process with some additional retirements. And they're like, well, we don't think that position is, may not be needed. We may be able to eliminate this position. So we're, we're starting that process and this is just one example early in the process.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, Harold, and I, I agree. This does feel like a step in that direction. And I hope that that is the eventual outcome, is that it's not just, well, how do you want to, you know, reuse this FTE? It's, is the FTE needed? And so I think that's what the eventual outcome is going to be. And I'm hopeful that that's, you know, that's why we spent the money on that work and on the training and everything that's going to go with it. So, you know, again, I, I, I still, you know, I still do have the question of whether this could be more global. But I do like that it's hitting a couple of departments. So I think that's a good start.
I might add here as well, Mr. Mayor Alderman, um, Blessam, that some of the challenges that we have and some of the frictions that we have internally is with regards to, uh, you know, processing in accordance with the financial policies of the city. And, and we struggle with that quite a bit in, in police and fire. And mainly because a lot of that's just because they're not subject matter experts in that. And so I think the, the proposal with this position was have them to be a subject matter expert that could be that resource to both police and fire. That those, those financial transactions are being processed in a way that is more efficient and more effective for the finance department, that we don't continue to bounce these things back and forth. And there's this loss of translation in the middle. And I think that's what this position is being uh, moved towards is to be that subject matter expert and not just benefit the fire department, but also benefit the police department. And if I remember right, at a department head meeting, uh, Chief Kelly also offered up pretty much a halftime of this position to be used for any department that needed to, that could benefit from it. And so in essence, the fire department is giving up, um, part of the resources of this position to, to benefit the organization as a whole.
Mike, just?
I, I apologize. I'm getting maybe more down the rabbit hole here because that, again, it, it just, it tells me that we've still got to go the other way. I mean, I, I look at the city attorney's office with portfolios and people that are working together as a group because they are sort of the legal subject matter experts, but they have their portfolios that they work with. Um, if we're already going to have half of this position not working with police and fire and dispatch, we're already there, but we're leaving it in one department with one oversight there rather than a central. Again, I, I throw a finance just because that fits my mind because it seems like that's most of the duties, but it, it doesn't have to be that. Um, I, again, I, I'm not trying to beat it to death, but I think with each set of comments, I, my mind goes even further in one direction here.
And, and maybe we can ask Dave to come up, but he had some concerns about moving towards that model from finance of, of having the portfolios and those kinds of things. And this was the, this was the closest that we could get to and agree to, uh, with regards, um, to that concept.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, we do, uh, implement a similar portfolio process in finance where we have folks assigned to work with specific departments. And the thought process behind that is they learn some of the particular grants that those departments deal with and some of the intricacies of those departments as well. So we do already implement, um, that to some extent.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Rob.
Uh, and actually this is going to be for Chief Kelly rather than Dave, so.
Thank you, Dave.
We've been talking at some of our wellness meetings over the last couple of months about a liaison position for something, uh, similar, but not quite this. Is this something that you would think could maybe ultimately fall into that role as well? If it's going to be for fire, dispatch, and PD, which is the position we were all talking about, is that something that we could kind of put them together?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller, it could. I mean, we've never had this position, so we're not really sure who we're going to get. Um, what are their talents? If, um, we just, we need someone who can kind of do a lot of that follow-up. For example, a contract, you know, we go back and forth with the attorney's office and we have to maybe go back to the vendors and this person can just kind of take that and run with it. Um, a lot of times with, you know, the finance stuff, we're going back and forth, grants. Um, police and fire have a lot of the same grants, so it'll be easy to, to learn one, you have the other one. Um, so we just felt that this would be a good, almost a pilot program for us. Um, to be able to look, you know, for other departments that have that same type of thing. And again, um, it'll depend on who we get. Um, maybe they're really good at writing grants, so that'll be a really good resource for us. And that's where we eventually want to get, is where they're finding the grants because we just don't have time. You know, I have a staff of three upfront, um, plus my admin and we're the ones that are doing all the finance stuff and we're the ones that are doing all the HR pieces. It, it'd be just nice to have someone who can kind of immerse themselves into those, those things and, and be a resource for us and a liaison.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Blessam.
Moving on to item 7.7, First Contract Amendment Facade Improvement Case Number FI dash 12. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
A motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Uh, Scott, you asked to have this pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this has nothing to do with the property, um, that this is being done on or the, you know, the owners of the property. Our facade improvement program, I'm really hoping that, um, when our Economic Development Committee gets done, that we really look at this. It, it's a project that if you decide that you're going to do your facade, you invest 25% and the city will invest the 75%. To me, this just, it, it, it makes no sense to me where we came up with that. And then we have $100,000 or $180,000, $180,000 if it's a corner lot. This particular one, they're looking at adding, um, a powered door, which I agree with. The city's going to invest $3,750 and the owner's going to have $1,250. There's a big disparity there. I look back and I looked at this project, this particular project, um, the investment that they're making, the city's investing $130,554 and the owner's investing $43,518. Again, it just does not make any sense to me. I get helping out businesses and stuff, but this is a giveaway. And I really think that we need to do something with this program.
Any further discussion? Anything further? We have a motion and a second on the floor saying no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion passed five to two with dissent from Alderman Fuller and Samuelson.
Moving on to item eight on the agenda, action items, 8.1, 16th Street Southwest Reconstruction Award of Bid. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item nine on the agenda, personal appearances. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to speak to the council, uh, at this time. If you would like to step forward, the only request is that keep your comments to five minutes out of respect to others who wish to address the council. This is item nine on the agenda. Now is your opportunity to step forward if you wish to speak to the council. Seeing none, we will move on to item 10 on the agenda, miscellaneous and discussion items. Item 10.1, idle while subdivision development and estimated infrastructure costs.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as outlined in the memo, uh, city staff was contacted late last year with regards to Minot Public Schools looking at potentially, um, selling off some land to be developed into housing. There was some concerns about the cost of infrastructure by potential developers. I was requested for the city to consider whether or not we were willing to, co-fund any of the infrastructure costs to make the project pencil out better and be more realistic. I will say that this conversation was had late last year. I don't, I'm not, don't know that I'm currently up to date on any of the numbers or the progress or the negotiations between the, the school district and the potential developers. I'm just following through on what was requested of us at the end of last year. So I had the city engineer uh, run some numbers as far as what the infrastructure costs would potentially be. Uh, they are significant, about, uh, close to $13 million. Uh, with 168 lots, I think it calculates out to about $87,000 per lot in infrastructure. So at this point, I thought I would bring it to council for some conversations so that I can have some direction on how to respond to Minot Public Schools and their potential developer, uh, if there's any interest in continuing this conversation, uh, or not and what the willingness of the, the council is. Uh, previously to now, uh, the expectation has been that the developer uh, build this infrastructure as per specifications. And then streets, water mains, sewer mains, all those kinds of things, streetlights. All that is to be built in, uh, by the developer and then that infrastructure turned over to the city for our ownership and maintenance thereafter, uh, in perpetuity. Uh, we have not contributed financially to any of those. And so the question is, is that what we continue to do? Or is there enough pressure on our housing stock and those types of needs that the council feels that there may be some? that the council feels that there may be some opportunity or necessity for us to intervene, even potentially financially, uh, to help alleviate some of those pressures and issues? And so I wanted to provide the council the opportunity to have that discussion and provide staff with direction on whether or not that's changed. And if it has changed, in what ways has that changed? And under what direction and parameters the city staff should consider these requests in the future?
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm recalling a couple of meetings ago where we were dealing with a similar request where the developer was coming in to take over a failed development project and wanted us to pay for um pulling out uh the existing um infrastructure. I think that, in that case, it was uh hookups from the main. And um so that they could subdivide the lots and make them townhouses instead of single-family, single-family lots, or flip it the other way around. And and um, you know, when, when I look at the numbers that have been presented in this write-up and and considering all of the uh kinds of needs um uh that were alluded to earlier of, you know, more infrastructure projects than than we know what to do with, it's it's pretty tough to look at um finding thirteen million dollars to uh do this on kind of an all or nothing basis. So I I guess um my initial reaction was um, we're not the source for this. Um, certainly not for all of it. And maybe there's, maybe there's another way to structure a deal, or maybe they can develop um a smaller portion of the parcel uh to make it more palatable. But uh, I I can't see a way to go go forward with the the way it's presented.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, eighty-six thousand dollars per lot, and that's, that's just for infrastructure infrastructure costs, and you, what are you going to sell them for, eighty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars? You're you're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a lot. It it, the numbers just don't pencil out. The previous uh item that you're you're discussing, Mark, again, I think that's a to me, again, looking at at at, we have existing infrastructure. We have an ordinance in place that doesn't allow them to move forward with their projects, so we're forcing them to to adhere to our current ordinances by removing the c- and capping it at the main. And they came in with a a a special assessment ask. To me, that that makes sense. If we're not willing to do that one and pass the buck on that one, give a stamp of approval on that one, this one doesn't have a snowball's chance in you-know-where. So that's my thought.
Lisa?
Thank you. So I I would be opposed to this as well. And and I I do want to acknowledge that we do have a housing shortage. I think we all know that. Um, I don't think that our investment in this is the right thing. And I I think as a council, we've certainly discussed um a willingness to move forward on an investment in the police department. And I would much rather see us use our dollars in that way than making this investment.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, the other, you know, I I I just echo everything that's been said so far. The the one thing that I would say with this particular deal is that I think we're a little early. I I know that we're responding to what was asked of us back in the fall. But in conversations, um, I had a conversation with school board member, conversation with one of the main developers that's taken a look at the project. This is all premature at this point, based on the deal that they're talking about. And so um at this point, um, we, I don't, I don't see any reason to to take an action or to or to head that direction. Um, that's, that's not to say that there couldn't be a place for some type of thinking in the future. You know, one of the things that was very unique to me about this particular project was the link that it was going to bring to Ramstead. Um, and I, forgive me, I don't remember the street, the cross, the the avenue that's right along the south side of Ramstead. But there there's something very specific in my mind that occurs when you're linking up main portions of the city. So I can't see doing something across every lot. But I do, my mind does say, when we're building out another big part of the city, there's ways to think of that. And so I I just, you know, I think in this case right now, my thought is there there really isn't direction for us to say, hey, there's a big way to do this. But the, I think there's a thought process that we've got to continue talking about. We've talked a little bit about that in the Economic Development Committee, and whether there are ways for us to participate so that we are not completely out of range with how everything, every, all this is being done everywhere. Um, and I know that maybe sounds funny for me because I I've been, I've been pushing hard on that. I'm not a fan of specials. In fact, that's one of the reasons why I say it the way that I just did. I would rather look at what it takes to do some things along that avenue that's going to help a third of the city going to Ramstead at some point, as opposed to every single lot in that entire development, a hundred and sixty-eight lots or whatever it's going to end up being. So I just, I don't want to shut it off completely. I think there's got to be ongoing discussion forever. Um, but at the, you know, I think where we're sitting right now, I echo where everybody else is at.
Paul?
Just a question for for Mike. Mike, when you talk about helping get to Ramstead, you're talking about the lot behind, the road behind Ramstead to the south of it?
Yeah, I'm I'm talking about the avenue that cuts across from Sixteenth Street and links up what would be the south exit out of Ramstead. Because right now, you can't go that way. It's gravel. And so, right, I mean, again, that's, that's one of those things where I at least, I I'd be interested in that kind of discussion of what does that road look like, and and are there some things that we could do there? Because it's, you know, I don't, I don't always remember all the different names that we use, arterial or whatever those are. But the point of it is, is that that's going to get a lot of traffic. And I could see the city participating in something along those lines in a way that's different than specials on each and every lot.
Any further discussion? Does this provide direction?
I believe I have my answer, yes.
Okay. There's no further discussion, we will move on to liaison reports. We will start with Rob.
Well, last month at my part-time job, I had uh four meetings with the Ward County Planning Commission. So that was uh, we finally got through it, and we're done with the ordinances. I believe they're pushing them out this month to all the townships and everything. So um, had a library board meeting, which went very well, and then we also had the uh economic, um, sorry, not economic, the uh Ward County Emergency Management Meeting. Um, and those are always enlightening when you go in and listen to those. So, um, and then I think I attended a couple of the uh legislative forums at the state fairgrounds, so.
Thank you, Rob. Mark?
Um, we had the uh uh MPO meeting um last month, uh working on, um, looking forward to the next year um with uh budget. Uh, we also passed some um uh policy um documents with regard to uh some HR um uh employee review type things uh and uh and some other operational documents. We're kind of building that piece out as we go um a- and as we can get them, get things put together. Um, that, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Scott?
Um, I'll kind of reiterate what uh Rob said. Uh, Ward County Planning. I don't know that we're done with it, because once it goes to um the townships, I'm sure there's going to be some things that we'll have to clean up. But the plan with that is is to try to get that approved in July. That's all I have.
Lisa?
Uh, my report's pretty brief. Uh, I attended the Service Space and Planning Council full board meeting. Um, so I only had the one meeting um in the last few weeks. But I did want to um, on a different note, offer condolences to the friends and family of Leif Snyder. Leif had been a city council candidate, um, was a regular attender at our meetings, and he did pass away last week. So our condolences to his friends and family.
Thank you for adding that, Lisa. Mike?
Um, and I'll just echo that. I was going to say the same, so so thanks for doing that. Um, Leif was, Leif was a good guy. He, you know, he and I didn't see exactly the same way on every last issue, but he was a great resource and a good friend. So um, uh, for me, last economic development committee meeting, we finally, scheduling finally caught up with us and we had to cancel. We just, we didn't quite have a quorum, and it's probably headed for the most important parts of the process where we'll be finalizing um our recommendations back to council. Uh, this, this coming Friday, Lisa will be in to talk to us a little bit about the childcare committee, and then we'll be working on on honing the the document that we'll be sending back to to council. Um, I, this week, I, coming up, I have nine-one-one meeting on Thursday, and then the uh um Mining Commission on Aging Friday, and then back-to-back right into economic development on Friday and Friday afternoon. That's it.
Thank you. Mike, Paul?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, economic development, Mike touched on it. Again, I will do my best. I may be out of town this Friday, but uh, again, we're getting into kind of the meat and potatoes of of recommendations back to the council. Um, Renaissance Zone uh last week. Uh, and again, it's encouraging to hear some of the comments of 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 everyone here at the at the day because those are some of the concerns of of old, uh, old applications that are out there prior to the uh the deadline that was put on there, as well as discussions on how to make that program work more for the city, be more proactive with it, whether it's marketing or whether that's moving our blocks more regularly and 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 not necessarily waiting for projects to necessarily come in on these blocks, but actually try to go to a fine blighted and and depressed areas of the city um commercially and 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 try to uh revitalize some of those areas. So um, one of our our uh next meetings will will have that discussion on how to uh better utilize those blocks. And if that's replacing them more frequently, that'll be part of the discussion. Uh, Visit Minut, I have this week, and also attended a bid opening for street projects last Tuesday.
Okay. My liaison report was included in the mayor's report. Before we move to item number twelve, just a couple of shout-outs. We had an intern in the city uh city attorney's office from Minut State University, Jake Swirple. He uh competed down at the National NCAA Division Two Wrestling Championships over the weekend, and uh he achieved All-American status. So Jake, congratulations, and uh thank you for your internship. Also, Lee Lee Bell, Minut High. Um, they didn't achieve what they wanted to, but she is uh holding the record for the most points scored in uh all of Class A basketball. So a couple of shout-outs there. Uh, moving on to item twelve, adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good meeting.